Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, May 5th, 2014. I ask that you all please rise for brief invocation and be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as the City Council meets in regular session, we are just ever so thankful for the many gifts and great opportunities that have come before us, the community of Batavia and our surrounding area. We are certainly honored tonight to have the Mooseheart Red Ramblers with us and honoring them on their state championship and the endurance and fortitude and talent that they displayed is something that is admired by the entire area. Tonight also, we just ask for guidance and direction for the City Council as we act upon the items before us. And as always, we also want to remember those from our community and from throughout the United States of America who are serving us so ably on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. We just ask for all these blessings, knowing that each and every member of the Council is here tonight with good things in their heart and mind to do what is in the very best interest of the community of Batavia. We ask for all these blessings, amen. I'd ask the scouts from Troop 43 if you would come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it very much. Okay, we will move then to item number three, which is a roll call of the City Council, please.
Brown?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Atack?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chanset?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sparks?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Alderman Homan is absent. Sam?
Here.
Vassilian?
Here.
Saron?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Let the record reflect that thirteen of the fourteen elected Aldermen of the City Council are present and accounted for this evening's meeting, so we have the necessary enrollment to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, which are items to be removed, edited, or changed in tonight's agenda. Alderman Sparks is Chairman of Governmental Services. Do you have this?
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number U on the consent agenda, the approval for a Class D one liquor license and a junk license for outdoor service and live entertainment for Fox River Bar and Grill LLC, is being moved to thirteen A on the regular agenda. Item number nine on the regular agenda, presentation Water Street Studios Artful Mosaic Mural Project, is being stricken and being replaced with item nine again, presentation of two awards for the River Street Project from the Illinois Chapter of Congress for a new urbanism and Illinois Chapter of American Society Landscape Architects. Also, item number twenty, executive session, there is no executive session tonight, so number twenty will be taken off. I move we accept the agenda as amended.
Second. Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman McFadden, for the approval of the consent agenda, or the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassilian?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Agenda as amended is approved, thirteen yes, no, no, and one absent. Moving then to item number five, which is approval of tonight's consent agenda. Again, Alderman Sparks is Chairman of Governmental Services. Would you present this, please?
Thank you. The consent agenda is as follows: To accept and place on file: A) The Joint Committee of the Home Minutes for April 8th, 2014; B) The Zoning Board of Appeals Minutes for September 13th, 2013; C) The Plan Commission Minutes for April 9th, 2014; D) The March Financials; E) The Engineering Department Quarterly Report. Approvals are: F) The April 25th, 2014 payroll, an amount of $722,450.95; G) The accounts payable check register, an amount of $591,299.29; H) The City Council Minutes for April 7th, 2014; I) Resolution 14-56-R, authorizing execution of a deed of land in Fox Trails Phase One subdivision to the Batavia Park District; J) Resolution 14-55-R, authorizing execution of easement agreement and grant of easement for PIN number 122630002 located west of Hart Road at Batavia Creek with the Batavia Forest Preserve District; K) Approval of option number four, elimination of new sidewalk program beginning in 2014, reduction of fund for sidewalk/curb and gutter maintenance funding to $100,000 through 2023 and/or until other funding sources are available; L) Approval, approval for staff to work with King County to utilize CDBG grant for street improvements in 2014; M) Approval for the policy of resurfacing curb overlay streets that currently have the existing curbs overlaid with asphalt; O) Resolution 14-60-R, authorizing execution of an ICC agreement for rehabilitation of the Laurel Street Railroad crossing; P) Resolution 14-53-R, approve ground space lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for installation of facilities at 200 North Red Ant Road; Q) Resolution 14-61-R, authorize execution of Task Order Number Two for engineering services with Rempe Sharp for the Houston Street Water Main Project; R) Resolution 14-57-R, authorize a construction/engineering agreement for federal participation in Route 25 and 31 pedestrian crossing project, an amount of $59,998.6; S) Resolution 14-58-R, authorize execution LA agreement for the Route 25 and 31 pedestrian crossing project, an amount of $550,000.151; T) Approval, approve Class B one liquor license for Elm Meldy Corporation doing businesses crown liquor and tobacco. I move we accept and place on file the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Moved by Sparks, second by Vassilian. Any discussion? I think we do have a typo here under item J, which is, it says the Kane, or the Batavia Forest Preserve District. Do we mean the Kane County Forest Preserve District or the Batavia Park District? Kane County Forest Preserve, okay. Let the record reflect that correction. Just for the benefit of, we have a number of scouts in the audience who are attending our meeting tonight for a merit badge, so they're here to learn about government. I just want to take a second to explain that what we have just done, while this was a lengthy list to read, the City Council has already discussed each and every one of these items in our committee meeting, and so as a result, they feel that they've thoroughly discussed it and there's no need to have individual items then acted on and voted on in separate motions. So what we are doing with what we call the consent agenda here is we are adding a whole bunch of items that normally would take up a whole bunch of time, and we're putting them all into one item that will be acted on as one motion. We'll take care of a whole bunch of business, so hopefully then we can give the rest of the meeting to stuff of more importance that the Council needs to discuss further, but this is a good way to kind of clean things up, and so this is the way we put this together so everybody kind of understands what we're doing here. We're just not running through this. We've already had discussions on all these items at our committee meeting, and as a result, we've decided by action of the committee to put these on the consent agenda and act on this one. So we have a motion and second. Any discussion further? Kirk, call the roll on the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassilian?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved, thirteen yes, no, no, and one absent. Okay, then moving up to item number six, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody that wishes to address the City Council this evening? Okay, then moving to item number seven, which is going to be a report from the Batavia Chamber of Commerce. Do we have anybody here for, from the chamber? I don't see anybody. All right, well, moving right along to a nice part, which is going to be the recognition of the Mooseheart Red Ramblers basketball team on their winning of the Class 1A Championship with the Illinois High School Association. So I'm going to ask Alderman Wolf if he would come up to the podium and join me. And one of the reasons I asked Alderman Wolf to join us is that Alderman Wolf is the voice of the Batavia Bulldogs on PATV, so he knows a lot of the names of a lot of the basketball players and the coaches and whatever, and one thing you don't want to do when you're a politician in office is mispronounce people's names. And some of you guys, like myself, have a challenging last name, so I've got Alderman Wolf here to kind of back it up, to read the names of who we're going to present the proclamations to. But what I want to do is take just a second, number one, to express the community's admiration and appreciation of the Mooseheart team for what you did for not only Mooseheart, but for Batavia and the general area. By winning the state championship, you really kind of set you apart from the rest of the state, and you're the champs, and like our high school football team of earlier this year, Batavia feels doubly blessed and honored that we've had two teams within our greater community here who are state champions. And there aren't many places that can boast that. And so we always try, when we have a state championship, and we did this with the high school football team earlier, we put together a little proclamation that I'm going to read, and then we put it into the form of a presentation, it's got some pictures and that, but I want to tell you a little bit about this one that we have here tonight. One of the things I discovered as we began to look into this is that last summer I was down in Mooseheart for the 100th anniversary of the institution, and what was unique about that was is that as I began to read into the history, I found that the, sorry about that, the Mooseheart Athletic Association, which was started 100 years ago in the season of 1913, 1914, interestingly, two of the people who were the directors of that association were two very prominent Batavia residents. One of them was Mr. Rodney Brandon, and Mr. Brandon started at Mooseheart and then later left Mooseheart and became the Illinois State Director of Public Health, which is quite an honor for our community to have somebody in that position. And the second gentleman was a gentleman who moved from Indiana with Mr. Brandon up here when Mooseheart was started, and his name was Ernest Oswalt. And Mr. Oswalt was a very prominent, went on to become a very prominent Batavia businessman, and his remembrance in our community was is that he founded, owned, and built the Camp Hannah Corporation, which is the very large building up at Fabian Parkway and Route 31 at the north end of Batavia. And so the two guys that really are credited with starting the athletic program at Mooseheart also have a very, very interesting history in the city of Batavia. So the proclamation that I'm going to ask the Council to approve here reads Mooseheart Red Ramblers, and at the top we have a picture of Mr. Brandon and Mr. Oswalt, and it says, "Be it known to all citizens, to all that the city of Batavia presents this certificate of congratulations to each," and we have each one individually labeled with the player's name on it, "given as an expression of admiration by the mayor and city council for the impressive sportsmanship, athletic achievement, and inspirational example that you have provided as a member of the dynamic 2013-2014 Mooseheart High School varsity basketball team in winning the Illinois High School Association 1A Boys Basketball State Championship. Ironically, your success comes on the 100th anniversary of the creation of the Mooseheart Athletic Association, which was founded by Directors Ernest Oswalt and Rodney Brandon, two gentlemen who played a very important role in the economic and cultural success of Batavia. Our thanks to the Mooseheart Ramblers for the reuniting of a historical legacy that truly illustrates the winning spirit of achievement, which is, has the supportive relationship that long has existed between Mooseheart and the city of Batavia." So that's the proclamation, and I'd ask for the Council to approve that as a motion for the approval for this proclamation. So moved. You have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Kirk, call the roll, please.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassilian?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
Proclamation is approved, thirteen yes, no, no, and one absent. Okay, Alderman Wolf, this is where you take over. I'm going to give this to you, and you're going to call up and hand me the proclamation, and I'll hand it to the player.
All right. First one is for Freddie Akito. Hamid Adunue. Ramiro Sanchez. Joshua Gordon. Peter Karowski. Joshua Tucker. Mangisto Deng. J.J. Odonisi. Makur Pow. Akeem Nying. Remy Magisha. Nick Lepardo. Coach Ron Arons. And Coach Pete Daniels.
I'd like to ask the coach if he'd make a few comments about the team and the great success you've had.
Sure, thank you. Well, a couple things. We thought, you know, start of the summer, we were going to be a halfway decent team. At the beginning of the summer, we played in a couple leagues. We went to a DePaul team camp, and then we played in the Geneva Summer League, and I think people around here would like this. Our first game we played was Geneva, and we beat them by 16 in the Summer League. So we thought, hey, we're not going, we're going to be a pretty decent team. And we thought, we thought that would be, that was kind of a start of our season. Throughout the year, we had great teamwork, we had great team chemistry. Once we got to the state basketball tournament, the guys seemed really focused. I appreciate every one of our seniors that we've had for, you know, the last three years. I appreciate, you know, all the players that we had, and we are so honored to be a part of the city of Batavia, and thank you so much for honoring, with honoring a great group of guys like these guys. And we would like to honor you. We have autographed picture from our team with all the state championship hardware that we had earned this year.
We'll display that someplace here in the building.
Thank you so much.
Let me just close by saying that on behalf of the city of Batavia, this is really kind of a very special honor for us because just in the past year, the city of Batavia has annexed much of the Mooseheart property to be part of our community in the future. And one of the things that we hope to be doing out there is along Randall Road, building a nice row of commercial businesses that should generate a lot of taxes and revenue, not only for Batavia but for Mooseheart. And secondly, we are hopeful that Mooseheart in the near term is going to start building a senior living community out there that will kind of rival the one you already have down in Florida called Moose Haven. And I've already got people calling up here in Batavia asking, when's Moose going to start building that senior living community because they want to get in there and be part of this. So I would suggest that the area out around Randall Road and Main Street is going to change in its appearance here, hopefully in the near term, and that what's going to happen on the Mooseheart, what is now the Mooseheart property is going to be very good things, not only for the community of Batavia, but more importantly, for Mooseheart, and will be a continuation and allow for some funding that will help Mooseheart continue to do what is the obvious, great, and good things that are happening by your institution. So I just think this is kind of a proverbial win-win for all of us, and certainly your success just really accents and brings to the forefront the tremendous job that Mooseheart has done and is continuing to do, and we are thankful for your presence and being part of our community. So thank you for coming down tonight and participating. Thank you.
Hello? One thing, may I say something?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, I just wanted to recognize that Mooseheart also is one of four teams in the league that won the sportsmanship award, and it's a great honor that they've earned and they were awarded that, and it's an honor that I think is shared by the entire Mooseheart community, the administration, the staff, the student population. So just wanted to say congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for coming up. Okay, now we will move to the replacement, item number nine, which is going to be a presentation of two awards which have been received for the River Street Project. And who's? I thought Bill was going to interrupt. Bill's outside. Could you give us your name and address for the court, please?
I will. My name's Walter Magziers. I live at 1089 Kilberry in North Aurora. I'm here as, I'm a member of the CNU Illinois Executive Board, and this year I also served as the Chairman of the 2013 Charter Awards, and I'm here to present to the city of Batavia the 2013 CNU Illinois Charter Award for Best Street. The CNU, for those of you who aren't familiar, is the Congress for New Urbanism, and it's a member-based advocacy organization promoting walkable mixed-use neighborhood development, sustainable communities, and healthier living conditions. The CNU membership is comprised of city planners, architects, landscape architects, engineers, traffic engineers, elected officials, environmentalists, healthcare providers, educators, developers, generally anybody that has an interest in city development and the ongoing improvement of urban life, our members are having an interest in the Congress. You'll find more information about the CNU, Congress for New Urbanism, at cnu.org, and the Chicago, or the Illinois Chapter at cnu-il.org. For over 20 years, the CNU members have used the principles in the CNU's charter to promote the hallmarks of new urbanism, including livable streets, a range in compact, in compact walkable blocks, a range of housing choices that serve people of diverse ages and income levels, school stores, and other nearby destinations reachable by walking, bicycle, or transit, and an affirming human-scale public realm where appropriately designed buildings define and aliven streets and other public places, I'm sorry, spaces. Supported today by distinguished board members and other thought leaders from the worlds of urban design, development, academia, citizen activism, and government policy, CNU works to deliver these hallmarks to communities across North America and overseas on multiple scales. Whether it be brownfields, emerging growth areas, established cities, or small-town suburbs, new urbanism reinforces the character of existing areas in making them walkable, sustainable, and vibrant, revitalizing and energizing communities to their true potential. The principles of new urbanism are also central to making whole regions more livable and coherent and sustainable. The CNU Charter is a declaration of the principles to guide public policy, development practice, urban planning and design at the scale of the region, city and town, the neighborhood, district and corridor, and lastly, the building, street, and block, the essential building blocks of urbanism. The River Street Shared Street illustrates how a street is a public space and is too often underutilized and can be more than a conveyance for automobiles. This project demonstrates that the street can be an asset, not a liability or a utility that you are forced to live next to. You probably have all heard terms like context-sensitive design, road diets, tame streets, all variations of the livable, livable street concept or movement. While I'm here to tell you that your River Street Shared Street is an exemplar in the region, perhaps in all of the Midwest, this project will add shared street to the municipal lexicon that community, in communities throughout the area. You certainly have redefined the word streetscape for most people. This project will doubtless be copied, hopefully as masterfully as what you have crafted here. You have set the bar high, and you are to be commended for your vision and commitment to high-quality, human-scale urban design. You also are to be recognized for the risk taken with this project. As we all know, anything new and different is viewed with suspicion, and we all know how adverse humans are to change. The jury was struck by the simple yet elegant solution to a myriad of competing needs and constraints with this project, and how this project rivals shared streets in Canadian, European cities. Well done, Batavia and Altamano.
Thank you. Alderman O'Brien and Brown, you two are the remainers of the special committee, aren't you, the chairman and?
Yeah, I guess we are, yeah.
Why don't you come up? I'll just, I'll make a comment here, you know, thank you very much for coming down, Walt, and bringing this to us, and I feel like there's not enough excitement about this because it really is a big deal. There's a whole world out there that none of us are used to living around here, with the exception of maybe Alderman Vassilian, and that's called the architects and engineers of the world. And they live a different life and breathe a different way, and for you guys, as is for the city of Batavia, I believe, this is truly a big deal. As you said, this is something that is being recognized, not just around the area, but around the, around the country and in Canada. And it was a bold move that the city took, and it has paid off, and I truly believe it's, it's getting the recognition it deserves. So thank you for your effort in this and bringing this down to us. Appreciate it.
My pleasure.
And we have Alderman O'Brien also on that committee, and Alderman Sanuda who was still on with us. Mike, you want to make any comments?
Thank you. Congratulations.
Very good.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm glad to be here again. John McManus, Oak Park, one of the principals at Altamano, it was an incredible experience working on River Street. I brought my son out last week. He loved it. I was telling Alderman Brown that we talked to about five or six different people who all gave their opinions freely to us about it, but they were all positive. It's unusual for the American Society of Landscape Architects to give an award for a street. Usually, it's a park. Most of the ones this year were for parks, but there's an exception here. It's a merit award from the American Society of Landscape Architects to Altamano, Christopher Burke, and the city of Batavia in recognition of outstanding achievement in constructed urban design. So I'd like to congratulate you as well. It's spreading, and just let you know that today I was told by a friend that a village manager from another community was out here examining River Street as they're working on a downtown streetscape master plan. So you might be seeing a couple of those River Streets popping up. Thank you very much for the experience.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we are now to 10, which is, I believe there was a memo issued for the need to reappoint Dan Solis as a member of the Batavia Police Pension Board. I'd ask for a motion for that approval.
So moved.
Motion second. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassilian?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassilian?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?[1684.33]
Appreciate it. All right, we are now to 10, which is, I believe there was a memo issued for the need to reappoint Dan Solis as a member of the Batavia Police Pension Board. I'd ask for a motion for that approval.
So moved.
Motion second. Any discussion? Kirk Calderole.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassilian?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Motion for the reappointment is approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent. Moving to 11, which is approval of waiving a formal bidding for purchase of portable lifts. Alderman Wolf, do you have this?
Your Honor, just to start this off, these next two go together. Basically, I'll give the info right up front here. This is about the Street Division requesting authorization to purchase portable lifts. The ones listed they have currently at Public Works will only lift 9,000 pounds. Most of the vehicles that they have are between 10 and 60,000 pounds. These four column lifts are available to lift up to 65,000 pounds. The original amount included in the budget this year was 60,000 for these. They came in at 39,581.56. So the first thing I'll have is make a motion to waive formal bidding for the purchase of portable lifts for Public Works.
Second. Move by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien to waive the formal bidding process for the purchase of the portable lifts. Any discussion? Kirk Calderole.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassilian?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Motion for waiving formal bidding is approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent. Okay, moving to item 12, which is Resolution 14-52-R, authorized purchase of portable lifts from standard industrial and auto equipment in the amount of $39,581.56. Alderman Wolf?
I would make the motion that we approve that.
Second.
By Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of the resolution for the approval of the portable lifts. Any discussion? Kirk Calderole.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassilian?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Motion for the approval of Resolution 14-52-R is approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent. Okay, moving to item number 13, which is approval of a Class F liquor license for the Batavia Triathlon. Alderman Stark or Sparks, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city sponsors an activity in Batavia, an activity known as the Batavia Triathlon. It brings approximately 1,000 people here in June every year to swim, bike, and run. Last year, this event brought in, I had it here, brought in some $13,000 to Batavia charities. We have done this in the past. I will make a motion that we approve a Class, Class F liquor license to be issued to the Batavia Triathlon for June 8th, 2014, along with a waiver for the $50 fee.
Second.
Move by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of the Class F liquor license for the Batavia Triathlon. Any discussion? Kirk Calderole.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassilian?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent. Moving to 14, which is approval of approval of policy of curb overlay of?
Thirteen A.
I'm sorry. Thirteen A, right, right. Thirteen A, which is the, going back to our consent agenda. Approval of a Class D liquor license and adjacent licenses for outdoor service and live entertainment to Fox River Bar and Grill. Alderman Stark or Sparks?
Fox River Bar and Grill LLC is, will be taking over the formerly known O'Briens. We are awaiting completion of background checks. This was approved unanimously. We have not completed the background checks, so I make a motion that we approve a Class D1 liquor license, an adjunct license for outdoor services and live entertainment, contention on all approvals of all background checks.
Second.
Move by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of the Class D1 liquor license with the contingency that it not be signed and issued until all background checks have been approved. Any discussion? Kirk Calderole.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassilian?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent. Okay, now moving to 14, which is approved policy of curb overlaid streets for driveway aprons not to be raised to meet the roadway grades as part of a resurfacing project. Policy to be reviewed within one year of approval by City Council. Alderman Wolf, do you have this?
Your Honor, this was part of a lengthy discussion that we had at our last J-Cow meeting, discussing some of the changes we're going to have within the programs. Basically, this is a policy that we will not do driveway aprons to raise them back up to meet the roadway as part of resurfacing projects. And we're going to review it within one year to see how it really plays out in the real world once we do it for a year. Anybody who was not there have any questions?
Any comments or questions on it?
Move that we approve the policy of curb overlaid streets for driveway aprons not to be raised to meet the roadway grades as part of the resurfacing projects. Policy will be reviewed within one year of approval by the City Council.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of the policy. Any discussion? Kirk Calderole.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassilian?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent. Okay, now moving to 14, which is approved policy of curb overlaid streets for driveway aprons not to be raised to meet the roadway grades as part of the resurfacing projects. Policy will be reviewed within one year of approval by the City Council. Second. We have a motion by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of the policy. Any discussion? Kirk Calderole.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassilian?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
No.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassilian?
Aye.
Serone?
No.
McFadden?
Aye.
And that vote is 11 yes, 2 no, 1 absent. So motions approved. Okay, moving to 15, which is approval of staff appointments. And you all have a copy of a memo from me dated May 2nd, in which I have been recommended to make the following appointments by the city administrator. They are the Finance Director and Budget Officer Peggy Colby, Police Chief Gary Shira, Fire Chief Randy Deike, Public Works Director Gary Holmes, City Engineer Noah Basquin, Information Systems Director Howard Chasum, Community Development Director Scott Buning, Street Department Superintendent Scott Haynes, Water Department Superintendent John Dillon, Wastewater Treatment Plant Superintendent Byron Richardson, as the coordinator, Chief Randy Deike, as the manager, Mark Davis, and City Attorney Kevin Drendo. I'd ask for a motion of approval. We discussed this in executive session last meeting. Move by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Clark. Any further discussion? Kirk Calderole.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
No.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassilian?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent. Moving to 14, which is approval of approval of policy of curb overlay of?
Thirteen A.
I'm sorry. Thirteen A, right, right. Thirteen A, which is the, going back to our consent agenda. Approval of a Class D liquor license and adjacent licenses for outdoor service and live entertainment to Fox River Bar and Grill. Alderman Stark or Sparks?
Fox River Bar and Grill LLC is, will be taking over the formerly known O'Briens. We are awaiting completion of background checks. This was approved unanimously. We have not completed the background checks, so I make a motion that we approve a Class D1 liquor license, an adjunct license for outdoor services and live entertainment, contention on all approvals of all background checks.
Second.
Move by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of the Class D1 liquor license with the contingency that it not be signed and issued until all background checks have been approved. Any discussion? Kirk Calderole.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassilian?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent. Okay, now moving to 14, which is approved policy of curb overlaid streets for driveway aprons not to be raised to meet the roadway grades as part of a resurfacing project. Policy to be reviewed within one year of approval by City Council. Alderman Wolf, do you have this?
Your Honor, this was part of a lengthy discussion that we had at our last J-Cow meeting, discussing some of the changes we're going to have within the programs. Basically, this is a policy that we will not do driveway aprons to raise them back up to meet the roadway as part of resurfacing projects. And we're going to review it within one year to see how it really plays out in the real world once we do it for a year. Anybody who was not there have any questions?
Any comments or questions on it?
Move that we approve the policy of curb overlaid streets for driveway aprons not to be raised to meet the roadway grades as part of the resurfacing projects. Policy will be reviewed within one year of approval by the City Council.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of the policy. Any discussion? Kirk Calderole.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassilian?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent. Moving to 14, which is approval of approval of policy of curb overlaid streets for driveway aprons not to be raised to meet the roadway grades as part of the resurfacing projects. Policy will be reviewed within one year of approval by the City Council. Second. We have a motion by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of the policy. Any discussion? Kirk Calderole.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassilian?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent. Moving to 14, which is approval of approval of policy of curb overlaid streets for driveway aprons not to be raised to meet the roadway grades as part of a resurfacing project. Policy to be reviewed within one year of approval by City Council. Alderman Wolf, do you have this?
Your Honor, this was part of a lengthy discussion that we had at our last J-Cow meeting, discussing some of the changes we're going to have within the programs. Basically, this is a policy that we will not do driveway aprons to raise them back
That's what it says.
Thanks for taking that one, Dave.
No, it's architectural, it's architectural discussion.
[laughter]
There's going to be some, John Dillon is going to be having more discussion and his recommendations on the, the, you want to go ahead with this, Alan, but it's discussion on, on the picking of the architects for the window replacement of City Hall. Just on, see who was listening.
Okay, Public Utilities, Alderman Clark?
Nothing, other than what Alderman Brown already reported for Public Utilities. There's an executive session, I'm not even sure if we have anything on, well, it looks like item two might have something, but item one might, may or may not be on the agenda. But, other than that, nothing. Thank you.
City Services, Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. We will discuss the City Hall Architectural Services on May thirteenth, as well as a police mutual aid agreement. Also want to remind everybody in the public that Blush, Brush Collection starts next week, May twelfth, on Monday, on the east side, and May nineteenth, on the west side. Couple of changes on it. New this year, maximum diameter is six inches, and logs cannot be split. So make sure that if you have any questions, check out the website, there's a link right on the front page of the city website, and look at the schedule and make sure things get out there the weekend of the pickup, so that everything is out there at seven AM or by seven AM on Monday morning, the week that your side of town is scheduled. Thank you.
Okay, Government Services, Alderman Sparks?
Thank you. Government Services on spring break, I have nothing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving then to other business, anybody in the council of any other business they wish to bring up? Okay. Mr. McGrath, you, okay. Moving to nineteen, the Mayor's Report. I got one thing I wanted to just briefly discuss with you. I have been for some time, because of some issues that we had in the city of Batavia, been interested in what was happening to the Illinois State of Illinois sales tax as it applied to its collection and distribution, and as all of you know, we've had some issues in Batavia.
How would you like to eat a gourmet meal at a four-star restaurant and only?
[inaudible]. I'm just all ready.
You've all are familiar with this issue. What had happened was, is that there were businesses, not only in Batavia, but throughout the area, that decided that they wanted to move their so-called sale and collection of anything they were doing outside the six-county area that comprises the Regional Transportation Authority boundaries. Because by doing it, number one, you avoided the quarter cent RTA sales tax, you didn't have to collect it. And secondly, there were cities out in the hinterlands that were more than willing to enter into agreements where they would collect the municipal sales tax of a town like Batavia, and then keep ten or twenty percent of that tax for themselves, and then give the business back seventy or eighty or ninety percent of their sales tax that had been basically collected in Batavia. This ended up being a very bad situation, because as we found out, we had businesses that were still here in Batavia actively doing business, and calling upon us for our services and our support, and they were totally avoiding paying a sales tax. So this was happening throughout the region, and down in the southern part of the region, around Forest View, there was an oil company that had moved itself out to Putnam County, and the RTA decided that they would make, or help make this a kind of a legendary case in Illinois law, so they filed a suit challenging the ability of this company to do this, and it went all the way to the Illinois Supreme Court. And within the last six months, a ruling has come down unanimously, I believe, from the Illinois Supreme Court, ruling that you cannot do these sales tax games, and you can't be moving your sales tax out of a town where you are actively doing business. And so, as a result, there are a number of businesses running around trying to resituate themselves back into the towns that they had thought they were going to be leaving because they were going to get a deal to move their sales tax collection someplace else. Now, I have to take my hat off to the Regional Transportation Authority, because they have really been the stalwart in this whole discussion, because at the end of the day, they are telling me they were feeling that they were losing through this whole thing between a hundred and two hundred million dollars in revenue that the RTA probably seriously needed to do the operations of the trains and the buses in not only the CTA, but in Pace and in Metro. So that being said, the RTA really got into this, and one of the things that the RTA did was, is they, they went out and hired a private detective, and had the private detective go out and basically investigate all the companies that they were able to determine had moved their sales tax someplace else. In one particular kind of high-profile thing, which you'll see here in just a moment, the RTA found out that a couple of very large sales tax generators within the city of Chicago had decided to relocate themselves out in Sycamore, Illinois, which is in DeKalb County outside the RTA sales area, service area. So the RTA then took it upon themselves to look around the Chicago market, and they found some folks that were very highly involved in the media in Chicago, and they hired those individuals to go out to Sycamore and make a TV commercial, which they have now put onto the RTA website. And so if you can go on and watch this on the, but I thought it was interesting enough. I asked the RTA, because this past week I went with them to a meeting with the state's Illinois Department of Revenue at the Thompson Center, representing the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, in which the state is going to issue the new rules on sales tax collection, which basically mirror what has been decided by the Supreme Court, which should mean that we may be, in the case of Batavia, seeing some return of some sales tax dollars to us, because it's all been ruled that you have to play by the rules and by the book. And so from that, the RTA has put out this commercial, and so after some help with the tech department, because there was several different types of glitches involved in this thing, Bill, I think we can show this now?
How would you like to eat a gourmet meal at a four-star restaurant and only pay for the appetizer? Or fill up your gas tank, but pay less than the guy at the next pump? Sound good? United and American Airlines think so. They've got a deal where they get all the perks of operating in a world-class city like Chicago, but they don't pay their fair share for it. They buy millions of gallons of jet fuel to fly nearly a thousand planes out of O'Hare every day, but they say they don't buy it from their headquarters in Chicago's Willis Tower, or their big office suites near O'Hare. They claim they buy it here, in tiny Sycamore, Illinois. That's in DeKalb County, more than an hour away from where their planes take off. You won't find any big fancy offices in Sycamore. Ha, the local chiropractor's got a bigger sign than one of the world's biggest airlines. And you have to hunt for the American office tucked away here in the Town Hall. Employees, good luck finding them, or even a computer. The neighbors say the airline employees work very part-time. Now, why would two of the world's biggest airlines buy fuel in a place where they have no real staff, and there's not even an airport? Because the sales tax is less in Sycamore than where these airlines actually operate, a lot less. So American and United pretend to work out of this small town to avoid paying taxes where they actually operate. Oh, one more thing. Sycamore gives the airlines a big gift by giving back almost all of the taxes they collect. Since two thousand and five, United and American have shorted the city of Chicago out of nearly a hundred and thirty-three million dollars. They shorted Cook County out of sixty million. The RTA, they lost out on nearly ninety-six million dollars. And you wonder why CTA, Metro, and Pace fares are going up? Think about it. Millions of gallons of jet fuel, millions of dollars in lost taxes. It's not fair, and it's got to stop. In the end, you are being short-changed, because when these big companies don't pay, you do.
So if anybody asks you about, you know, what it is that we've been involved with, hopefully you get the idea. There, there were apparently about a hundred companies that the RTA had identified that were involved or attempting to get involved in this whole thing. Now, thanks to the decision of the Illinois Supreme Court, that has been terminated, and hopefully we're going to get the rules back in, in session, or the rules back on the books that will allow us to continue to collect or recollect some of the sales tax that we've been missing for the last few years. So I just wanted to share that with you, because this is now going public, and they have put this on their website, and I just wanted you to see what the kind of the story was, and you understood what was going on. So.
Your Honor, how about the money's lost? I mean, is that, that's gone?
The Supreme Court ruled that, you know, if it was...
From this day forward.
You can't expect to recapture it. I mean, the one that, quite honestly, is you just saw in the numbers, the one that really took the hit here was the city of Chicago. And, you know, if, in fact, they did lose a hundred and thirty-three million dollars, you know, that's a lot of work at O'Hare Airport. You know, you look on a daily basis, the number of employees, and policemen, and firemen, and security, and street workers, and whatever, because the, the whole O'Hare Airport complex is within the boundaries of the city of Chicago. The city was losing some serious money on that whole deal. The RTA is too, and you've all, I'm sure, heard about the governor's most recent task force that he put together to look at how the RTA is functioning, and what should be done to change it, and whatever. You know, one of the principal findings of that task force was, is that above all else, the RTA is in serious need of revenue to operate themselves. And we've just been through the winter where we heard of all the tremendous disruptions on the Metro service, because all the switches were freezing in the rail yards. And there's a lot of demand for revenue to replace, like a lot of that switching equipment in the Metro yards and that. So if there's anybody that could use that, a hundred and thirty-three million dollars or whatever, they're ninety-six million, I guess, was the RTA's share of it. The RTA is the one that really needs to have this revenue, if in fact, we're going to continue to do all the services that they're trying to do. And, you know, Batavia is in an enviable position right now with the RTA, because we've just completed erecting the new bus stops on Randall Road, and it's going to be a year or two before this really comes into action. But one of the things that hopefully, as I think I've told you before, you're going to be able to do is take your luggage and go out and stand at the bus stop on Randall Road, get picked up by the bus, go up to Elgin, transfer over to the I-90 bus on the shoulder, and that'll take you right into the north end of O'Hare Airport, where a CTA bus will come out of the airport, pick you up, and take you to your terminal. So you'll be able to take the bus from Batavia to O'Hare Airport, and when you come home, you can reverse that and come back. I mean, I think there will be a lot of people in this town who will use that service when it's available to them, and they see it really can work. So there's a lot at stake here, and I'm glad that finally some things are being done that kind of shake this up and kind of get this financial thing kind of back into the scale that it needs to be, because if this was allowed to continue, you know, we would be putting specifically the RTA services into a real trick bag. So I appreciate the good efforts of the RTA on this, and I think they are to be commended